Thank you, everybody. We're going to call the order. Joint meeting for the Grand Forks City Council and the Park Board or the Board of Park Commissioners, Wednesday, January 11th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. Looks like Marine doesn't have the roll call. You want me to?
I can do it.
You can do it, Marine?
Yeah.
I want you to go ahead and just do everybody. That'd be great.
All right, starting with council members Weigel, Wasowski, Weber, Linsky, Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
And the parks Garfoud, Leducer.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kraft.
Here.
McIntyre.
Here.
All right, we have Korm, both bodies.
Sounds great. I'm just going to start with a couple remarks and then we'll hand it over to Russell Kraft. See, he's got his stuff written down, so it should be pretty quick. Just want to thank the park board. I think we've had a great partnership over the years, whether it's public works in the forestry department or quality of life initiatives. Been a big priority, policy priority of mine is the quality of life, health and fitness type of facilities. This is the next step, I think, in moving to the future. We had, obviously, Choice Health and Fitness was a big one years ago, and now we're kind of taking the next step. The pool is obviously a little bit of a more dire situation that needs to get figured out. But with this initiative, I think also, you know, looking at the Alara Center and other facilities, and you know, that's certainly one that this should benefit, especially with market fluctuations that you worry about the continuing operations of that. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for coming to City Hall, and it's certainly a friendlier atmosphere than it's been in a while, so I appreciate that. So, welcome on behalf of the city and the city council.
Thanks, Mayor. City Council for your partnership in this project. It's exciting to be part of something like this. Board and Rager, we've discussed this, needed this, and have wanted this for many years in Grand Forks. So, I firmly believe this project will be widely supported by the community and looking forward to seeing it happen. So, with that being said, introduce our executive director, Mr. George Hillier.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you, Mayor Boczenki, city council members for hosting here tonight, hosting the park board as well. We've got, with these two potential facilities that we're exploring, some good benefits for continuing our partnership that we've had for the betterment of the Grand Forks community. So, maybe I can talk for a moment about how we got to this point. We have a needs for the aquatics facility. So, our aquatics, we got the small pool. We have a Choice Health and Fitness. We have a, there's a pool that YMCA operates. HSLP is looking at closing in the not-so-distant future. So, if anyone's got kids in town and they're looking at getting swimming lessons, they know that that's a, that's a hard, hard thing to come by, long, short, on open spots. So, lots of opportunities there to have some pools. The school district, they've got some issues with their pool. So, an opportunity to do something for the entire community of Grand Forks. So, that's, that's why we're looking at the aquatics facility. The turf and the court facility, we've, we've heard comments from our user groups and stakeholders for many years. You know, the winters are long in Grand Forks and summers are short. And this would be an opportunity to provide year-round training and regional tournaments and other possibilities, I guess, for, for the kids of Grand Forks. Maybe I could introduce our consultants here that are, that are online. We, seeing these, these issues that we had, we looked out for a consulting firm. We ended up contracting with Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn's well-known in the parks and recreation field nationally, their national consulting firm. And we've also had, around the state of North Dakota, Barry Dunn's done projects, whether it's feasibility studies or master plans or, or different types of things around the state of North Dakota. So, talking with my colleagues in, in other cities around North Dakota, they've had great things to say about Barry Dunn, and, and we've kind of experienced that in the time we've worked with them as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Pat O'Toole. He's the lead with Barry Dunn. And Pat, if you want to introduce your team. You're on mute, Pat.
You'd think it's my first Zoom. I'm Pat O'Toole. I'm the manager with Barry Dunn. And as George said, we've done quite a bit of work, not just in North Dakota, but nationally. I've been consulting personally for, since 1995. And prior to that was the director and assistant director of four different agencies in four different states. So, I've sat in George's seat in districts as well as municipalities, so we kind of see the whole picture. With me tonight, we have Zach. Let him give a little background on himself. With BRS is our architectural firm we've worked with a lot during the, through the years. And Steve Crocker with Water Technology. So, guys, go ahead and introduce yourselves, and then we'll kick off the PowerPoint.
Hello, I'm Zach Bezek with BRS, Barker-Winker Sea Cat Architecture. As Pat mentioned, our firm is based out of Denver, Colorado. Just like Barry Dunn, we've been working on public recreation and aquatic, indoor-aquatic, outdoor-aquatic facilities for over 35-plus years around the country as well. I think 30-plus states are where we have experience in projects. And our scope of work, 80% of our business is parks and recreation, public park recreation work. And we really work from early planning stages to final design to R&amp;D research and benchmarking as well. So, we're really trying to cover the gamut when it comes to everything related to parks and rec design.
And I'm Steve Crocker with Water Technology. Water Technologies is an aquatic design and engineering firm with a headquarters in Beaver Dam, Wisconsin. I'm the director of sports swimming. I have about 30-plus years of experience in competitive swimming, and I'm a mechanical engineer by education, and I've been doing this for about 20 years.
Great. Well, Zach, you're gonna, you're gonna control our screen share here. We'll get into our, we have a PowerPoint this evening to go through. We'd like to get through that and post questions at the end, if that works for everybody.
And can everyone see the screen?
Yep.
Okay.
I think you're on the end of it, Zach.
Hold on. My apologies.
Would have made for a short presentation.
There we go.
Okay. Well, tonight, we're going to just kind of go through the process very briefly, and then I'm going to talk a lot about, or not a lot, but some about how we got to where we're at, meaning the input we got and the process we went through there. And then we'll get into some design and cost issues. But I'm not going to read every step here, but these are the steps, the main steps in the process. So, we had the kickoff. We did the community engagement, which involved the stakeholder interviews, in-person focus groups. We did a slot analysis. We did online social pinpoint, which is really a website on this project that runs the length of the, of the project. And we also did a statistically valid as well as an online public survey. So, we also looked at demographics and the trends in your region to see what supported this, this type of, these types of facilities. And then came down, we did site analysis, conceptual drawings and capital costs. So, that's really what we're sharing tonight with you. What we'd really like is comments. What do you think about that? Are we on the right, right path here, so we can refine and finalize these concepts? We do have capital cost estimates as to what we're presenting tonight, but we would adjust those based on any input that we get back with our group and come up with the changes. And then the, pretty much the last steps to create an annual O&amp;M budget and perform projections based on that final facility. And, you know, square footage makes a difference. How many of what makes a difference? And unfortunately, it's not as easy to put together as a square footage cost on a building, because you change one simple item, it pretty much changes the whole budget and a lot of line heights. So, with that, we'll run through the community engagement real quick. Okay, Zach? Okay, we came into town, all three of us, actually, it was four of us. I had a colleague from Barry Dunn with me as well. And we hosted nine stakeholder focus groups over a three-day period. Had a open-to-the-public webinar with 77 participants. They actually sat in Grand Forks and did that virtually. We found out through the pandemic that that, we got a lot more people there virtually than in person, and we were very happy to have 77 folks on that, that open web webinar. So, we talked to 154, 152 people in that first week, which also allowed us then to set up some preliminary questions on our social pinpoint, which was the, the project webpage, and to formulate our survey to send out. Some of the results in the stakeholder, which, you know, we came in open-minded, open, anything is open game here to start, and really found out that from asking what's most important, aquatics or indoor turf or, you know, court space, what is it? This is kind of the priority scoring of the stakeholders. And these stakeholders were folks that are actively involved in these activities, know what's available in town, know what they're using, knowing what it's like in the winter, all that stuff. So, it kind of gave us that overall feeling that, that all three of these things are pretty well-needed. Okay, so we had it on the social pinpoint, which is the online webpage for the project. We asked the question, does Grand Forks need an indoor sports, multi-sports facility or an indoor aquatic facility or both? So, you can see the answer basically was, was most people felt like both these facilities were needed, whether they were included in the same facility or in different facilities. And of that group, only three thought that, that these weren't needed. Then we sent out 8,500 postcards on a statistically valid survey. We got 458 of what we call the invitation surveys, which is the statistically valid, which puts that margin of error on every question at about plus or minus 3.5%. We also put the exact same survey a couple weeks later online and blasted out marketing, asked all the youth sports groups, swimmers, everybody to contact their participants to go online and take the survey. We got another 650 of those. We combined 1,108 surveys, which is great, great return. And on some, on every question, we showed what the statistically valid survey said, what the online said, and in some cases, what the combined said. We keep the statistically valid separately, so we keep that validity. But in most cases, it's with, the online is within a percentage or two of the same answers with a few exceptions. And those few exceptions are very easily to, to know that, well, the soccer group really got, got with their group, and, and that went up. So, it kind of, that doesn't mean it's right or wrong, and we asked them to do that, but it is not that statistically valid. But we add those together to look at sometimes what that, that support of the, of the open link is with the statistically valid. So, we did not find a big discrepancy in, in very many areas, and if it was, it was a positive discrepancy. Just a few results that I think really stood out. More than half of all respondents feel there's either very important or extremely important to develop a community center with either an indoor turf courts and indoor competitive swimming pool. So, again, back to all three are needed. Of the different components, approximately 30% of the residents saw the indoor competitive swimming pool as not that important. Being in this industry, and I think Zach and Steve would agree, that's just a matter of numbers. If you look at the overall population and the number of competitive swimmers that you have in your community, this is what we kind of expect. But we also then compare it to the other tools we have that show that, that it is desperately needed, because the rest of them are going away, and you still have a large contingency to do that. And it's a want from a quality of life issue. So, I just want to point out, these are all different tools. There's not one that is the silver bullet and said, we got to follow to the T. The other thing that's very positive, go back a little bit, Zach. About 75% of the invite respondents, which is the statistically valid survey, responded that they will probably or definitely support an Alara Center sales tax extension in order to support this complex. So, that does include your open public, the people that might not ever step foot in it, and this and that. So, that's very positive news. I always tell people, those are not the same people that are going to go to the voting polls. So, this is good news to take a pulse, but you still, I think, have to be aggressive as if this number was, was not this high. In order for both samples, 9% of the respondents will probably not support the tax extension. 6%, definitely not. So, again, pretty low numbers with, with an opinion. And that one includes both the online as well as the statistically valid. So, that was good news. Okay, going back to the statistically valid survey and the, the open survey. This question was asking indoor turf, indoor recreation courts, and indoor competitive pool, which happened to be the top three. We listed a whole bunch of other things underneath that didn't rank quite as high as these. But column one in the red and pink, that's one and two on a scale of one to five. So, one and two is not that important or not important at all. Three is pretty neutral, and four and five is, is very important, extremely important. So, you can see where the percentages are on all three of these. The top row is the statistically valid survey, and the bottom row is the online. So, you can see the percentage went up for, for all three, for indoor turf, for courts, for indoor pool on the open link, which means all your participants and their families are going on the online. The other one was a random sampling of your community, which still was over 50% of all three of these facilities. Okay, asked the question kind of a different way. How likely would you or your family be to use each feature? So, same condition on the one and two and the fours and fives. So, 45, 42, 35% of the random survey said somebody in their household is very likely to participate in each of these three components. And then, of course, it jumped up to 62, 61, and 50% when asking those folks that are probably already in those activities. But again, very, very high support. And then this was the question on the, on the sales tax extension. So, you can see that the blue, that's the invite survey. That is the randomly distributed statistically valid survey. So, 47% probably would support it, 32% definitely support it. That's where that 79% came in. The open length was 38% and 51, so much higher, again, from the people that are probably already in those activities. And if you took an average of the overall, you're still at 42% for each, which would be 84%. So, it even jumps up higher. So, kind of to give you an idea of, of a pulse on the public and how they feel about that. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Zach and Steve, and we'll, we'll go through concepts and take your notes, so we can answer some questions at the end, please.
We're going to start with the aquatic concepts. You know, early on, when we began the study, I think there was a discussion of whether it was one facility or two. Ultimately, the, based on all the work we did, we decided it was best to have two separate facilities. So, we're going to show you today two concepts, one for an aquatics facility and one for an indoor sport turf facility. So, with the indoor aquatics facility, we studied a variety of program, aquatic programs, as well as site locations. This is just a quick overview of ones that were considered. We looked at a concept at the Choice Health and Fitness site. That was an eight-lane by 25-yard pool with a separate warm-up body of water. We also looked at the Choice Health and Fitness site, a 10-lane, 25-yard by 25-meter pool with a separate warm-up body of water. We looked at the ability to put a 50-meter pool at the Choice Health and Fitness site, as well as a separate 50-meter pool at the U&amp;D campus on a separate site. You know, some of the strengths of, or some of the reasons that the 50-meter pool did not make sense at the Choice Health site were generally size, logistics of the site, but also mostly staffing efficiencies. You know, trying to have, you know, having a facility at Choice Health was more efficient than having it off-site. And ultimately, the, the group decided that a kind of a hybrid, what we call a stretch 25 pool, was the preferred option, which we'll show you here in a second of what that looks like. So, giving you some context, I'm guessing most everyone here knows where the Choice Health and Fitness facility is. For those that don't, we just wanted to quickly show what this proposed preferred concept looked like. Here is the Choice Health facility that's on that campus, just between 40th and 47th Avenue. The area in red is proposed area of where that expansion would be. The site impacts of this expansion, you can see the expansion here, which will zoom in in a little bit here to the, to the southeast of the existing facility. This expansion would require, from our calculations, approximately 136 additional parking spaces to what's existing on the campus already. The proposed concept would look to have to move or demolish approximately 100 of the existing spaces on the campus, and then we'd replace that with, you know, approximately 250 spaces, either to the north or to the, to the southeast of the, the expansion. Part of the goals of the project were to not disturb the existing Icon Sports Center expansion space that they have over there, so we did not add parking or look at expansion that way. This concept also recognizes that there's an existing spray park on-site that would have to be relocated, that has been included in the budget. And the concept also looks at relocating the existing child watch or childcare center and playground associated with it with a new separate entry. So, we're going to zoom in and look at what this concept looks like. I'll kind of walk you through it. The, the concept focuses on a new, a separate entry to the southeast corner of the building with some sort of drop-off and plaza. The ability to have a controlled access entry that can both lead into the new aquatics expansion facility or, if desired, be able to control access and, and allow people to connect through a corridor or a glass walkway down to the main existing building entry. When this is open, or depending on the access, the ability to come into a lobby space that has views directly into the natatorium competitive pool or directly into the locker room space. About 3,000 square feet of locker room space is planned. There's also an additional 1,500 square feet of a multi-use, multipurpose room or potential party room that could be subdivided for, you know, classes, training, parties, any sort of use that's associated with the aquatic facility. This concept also looks at renovating the existing water slides that are outdoors at this time and making them into year-round indoor water slides that don't have the concerns of the weather and other maintenance challenges. The concept also includes about 4,000 square feet of support spaces servicing the pool, and, as I mentioned, a rear entry to the childcare drop-off and playground. For the aquatic space itself, it's about 17,000 square feet. The stretch 25 pool, and I'll let Steve jump in here and can elaborate, but allows for the ability to have 25-yard lanes in this direction, up to 15 lanes, and then the ability to have a movable bulkhead, which is shown here in gray, that can move and adjust to allow for 25 yards, 25 meters, or any additional length desired, and the ability to then move to have separate diving as well, separate from the, the swimming lanes.
Yeah, that's, that's an exceptionally flexible pool configuration that is really common for high schools across the country, as well as, as well as a lot of collegiate facilities that are in some of the mid-major conferences. It's an excellent, it's an excellent facility just because of the flexibility that the movable bulkhead provides you. You can, you can have swimming on one side of the bulkhead and diving on the other, and it kind of creates two pools. Or you can have swimming on, on one side of the bulkhead in a shallow warm-up area on the other side. So, it's incredibly versatile, and it's great for competition, but as well as just everyday, everyday usage by the, the staff at, at Choice.
The concept also includes the ability to have space for one meter and three-meter diving boards as desired. And we've also included within the budget the ability to provide for ceiling-suspended drop-down ninja cross course. It's a new kind of trend in the aquatic industry to provide another socialization, athletic exercise sort of element that can be easily integrated into a competition pool body, knowing that this facility will not only serve lap swimming, recreational swimming, but also have the ability to bring another, you know, amenity to the overall Choice Health and Fitness site. On the second level, there would be a central stairway and elevator bank that would bring you up to a second-level mezzanine lounge space that would have a nice overlook into the pool, a concession area, a couple of restrooms, views into that multi-story indoor waterslide renovation, and then direct access into the spectator seating gallery. Right now, this is currently planned for about 600 spectators based on the size of the facility. That was the preferred indoor aquatics concept. We'll move to the indoor sports concept. Regarding this facility, we studied three different sites. One, we're looking at the Choice Health and Fitness site, the Columbia Mall site, and the Alara Center site. At Choice, obviously, it would be great, from an efficiency standpoint, to have it all in one location. But just general size of the desired program elements that came out of the, the community surveys and feedback that there was, just wasn't enough ability to put this facility on the Choice Health and Fitness site. The Columbia Mall site was looked at, just a lot of more cons than pros within that site regarding existing demolition of the existing building, parking lots that really weren't in good shape, a lot of rework and costs that would have to go into taking away what's there before you can build back new. Also, the unknowns of some of the existing, you know, tenants' ability to evict or potentially move all of those spaces. Potentially could also extend the timeline was a concern. The Alara site had a lot, much more, you know, pros than cons. It had great visibility, the ability to have shared parking with the Alara Center, the property that was already owned by the city, which was a big hurdle to, to make it reduce in the timeline, centrally located, great access, whether you're coming from the interstate or the adjacent services. And the site was obviously large enough for the facility or potentially slight, slight growth if needed. So, with that, we studied the preferred site of the Alara Center. Again, to show some context of where this is located, the Alara Center here to the north on the map. This is their existing parking lot. And then to the south was about a 10.4-acre parcel that was right here where my cursor is showing. That is where we proposed the sports facility, indoor sports facility. There is currently an existing BMX track in this location, and proposal of that would be to look to move that on an adjacent site within the property. So, here's a zoom in of the overall concept, site concept. This size of facility, we calculated it would require about 510 parking spaces, just under 500 for the sports facilities' needs. And then there's a additional indoor golf simulator vendor that has been part of the discussion, a private vendor that would also require a couple, you know, 20 or so spaces as well into that calculation. The sense of putting the building and orienting the parking to the north was feedback we received that having this parking tied to the Alara Center parking to the north would allow for flexibility, whether there's large events here or large events at the Alara Center, a bit of overflow could be managed in addition to overflow from the BMX course and its potential relocation to the northeast parcel. Part of this concept also maintained in existing Part of this concept also maintained an existing three-point-five acre site in the southeast corner of this overview. And then, as I mentioned, the relocation, we've included in the budget, the relocation of this BMX course onto this one-point-five acre property to the northeast. So we'll zoom in onto this concept as well and show you more about that. As I mentioned, the entry to the building would be to the north. There'd be a main entry into the sports facility, as well as a potential secondary entry for the vendor. This would allow for separate operations as needed, depending on hours, time of day, year, that the either facilities might be open. However, once you get inside, this orange area is kind of a lobby lounge entry area. There'd be a control point. There'd be the administration area, about fifteen hundred square feet of admin with a check-in desk, the ability to control access to the facility as desired, but also the ability to allow people to go into the indoor vendor space, the indoor golf simulator space directly from inside the building as well. From this lobby, you'd have views into the main turf area, access via stairs here to the second level, and then direct views into the indoor court space. The way the concept of the building is designed is that the large volume athletic spaces are on the perimeter with a central core providing the services for the facility. There would be a number of these gray boxes represent storage spaces dedicated to each amenity. The there's a five thousand square foot indoor sports training area that has its own dedicated storage with five thousand square feet of a hundred meter indoor sprint track that would associate with the sports training element. There's an eighty thousand square foot indoor turf area. This turf area would include one high school-sized football field, the ability to have a high school-sized football field, the ability for six U-eight soccer fields, three U-nine soccer fields, or potentially one U-ten, eleven, or twelve soccer field if that sort of striping was desired. Additionally, modified high school softball fields would be potentially available, and then the ability to drop down four suspended batting cages within this area as well. To the east side of the facility, the right side of the facility, is the indoor gymnasium space, about thirty-two thousand square feet, which allows for four high school basketball courts, eight U-eight basketball courts, which, you know, for us are like a kind of a sixth grade level, or six, six-year-old level, five, six-year-old level. And then four volleyball with overhead suspended volleyball balls, and then up to twelve badminton courts that could be set up if desired. In the center core, beyond the storage spaces, storage for turf, storage for courts, and general storage, all the blue zones represent the required locker room, restroom. We have eight dedicated team locker room spaces for tournaments or leagues desired, and then multi-use or unisex, gender-neutral handicap accessible restrooms as well. On the second level, you'd either access the second level through a stair by the entry or through a main gallery stair. All the area in orange is represented by the second level, which we're calling the mezzanine level. So you have, you know, open views down into the indoor turf space, down into the indoor basketball space, but the main amenity up on this level would include eight dedicated pickleball courts with specific pickleball court surfacing enclosed within an area about fifteen thousand square feet. Adjacent to that would be lounge space for either spectators or players or participants waiting to get on, be able to watch the matches, watch the games, and queue up for the next next game. The other amenity focused on this level is a large twenty-five hundred square foot indoor playground area that could be a multi-story, multi-age element, and again, with a dedicated lounge space for parents, grandparents that are either there watching older siblings participate, or there with younger siblings that might be hanging out in the playground area. And then with this, because we're trying to promote spectators and viewing from the second-level mezzanine, there's about five thousand square feet of spectator viewing, which is represented by these gray bars on the east side of the turf area, and then on the north and south sides of the gymnasium, which equates to just over seven hundred, the ability to have over seven hundred spectators and see the spectator seating. And then finally, the blue, the blue blocks represent the public restrooms serving the second level. We did look at a scenario that, you know, if the indoor golf simulator private vendor decided to that the partnership fell through, what might happen with this space, the desired preference, instead of kind of lopping off that corner of the building, making the building, you know, making challenges with the construction, you know, more unique, interrupting the second level track was how we could repurpose that area on the main level with the program spaces desired for the community. And so in this second alternate concept, we looked at moving the indoor playground space, which we, you know, now could increase to about fifty-five hundred square feet. It could now have multiple play structures, multiple climbing elements from, you know, the two-year-old tots all the way to, you know, the teenage group or or, you know, older young adults. There's lots of flexibility in that, a dedicated kind of restroom area and storage associated with that element. And then in addition to that, looked at adding two multi-use, again, meeting rooms or party rooms that could be rentable space for parties associated with any of the activities within this facility or used for classes or training as well. This element, you know, I forgot to mention one of the the main features and benefits of the having the indoor golf vendor as part of the project was they were excited and willing to take on operations of the concessions and food service within the facility. That would take a large responsibility out of the Parks Department if they could take that on. In this concept, though, if that they were not part of the overall plan, we did provide a space for a small concession area to provide that that amenity for this facility. Some of the only other changes within this concept, on the, you know, some of the storage increases, the on the second level with the indoor playground moving down to the lower level, we would be able to increase the open lounge seating socialization zone that would allow for, you know, more hangout space, more spectator space, the ability to create zones for teams, camps, kids waiting between games, waiting between practices to hang out, you know, with their teams between between those those events, if they didn't want to leave the facility as well. So those were the overall concepts that preferred concepts that came through through the study. And with that, what we wanted to understand what were the costs, what the capital costs were. So we looked at the capital costs. We also understand when we look at costs, we focus on total project cost. We think it's very important that everyone is speaking in the same terms of what's the cost of the project. It's not just what the building is, it's what all the other costs are. So we broke down the three concepts. We have on the right here, the preferred stretch twenty-five pool expansion at Choice Health and Fitness. And then in green here, we have the two concepts that I just showed you for the indoor sports facility, the one on the left being the one with the golf vendor as part of the project, and the one on the on the right being without the golf vendor and and having that indoor playground playground space on the lower level. Overall, for the indoor sports facility, the square foot, it was about two hundred and eight thousand square feet, very large facility. Our our costs here are all estimated based on a midpoint construction of April twenty twenty-five. We think it's super important to understand inflation and understand what the costs are going to be when construction actually happens, not what they are today. So we've escalated this out based on our based on our budgeting and historic numbers, and and what we think, you know, the most realistic, earliest timeline could be for construction. So seventy-six thousand and seventy or seventy-eight million and seventy-six million respectively for the indoor sports complex hard costs. The site costs, just around three-point-eight million. And then the soft costs and contingencies are around twenty to twenty-one million. Those contingencies we've estimated are included approximately ten percent for the indoor sports facility, and about twelve and a half percent for the aquatics facility. Overall, for the indoor sports, about just over a hundred million is the total project cost for this two hundred and eight thousand facility concept that we presented. On the right here is the stretch twenty-five pool option, concept that I showed you initially. Again, the square foot for that facility was about forty-two thousand square feet. Facility hard cost came in around twenty-seven million, site cost about a million and a half, soft cost in the range of eight-point-three million, with an overall total project cost estimated around thirty-seven million. And what I'm showing down here is what we believe the costs today are in Grand Forks, knowing that that escalation is a real cost. We all know what's going on in the market today. It's kind of reflective of, you know, a potential twenty million dollar difference, or a seven million dollar difference in the aquatic facility from building the building today, if shovels were in the ground versus building it in twenty, you know, late twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I've included down here some of the additional assumptions that we made within our budgeting, but would happy to answer any other questions as well. And that was that was it for our our concepts and cost budget modeling.
Right. Thanks, Zach. And then back to our feasibility study process steps. Down at the bottom, highlighted in red are what we consider to be the final steps and the next steps. Refine and finalize these concepts that that we've shared with you tonight. Update any capital cost changes based on any of those refinements. Then put an annual O and M budget and performer projections against each of those facilities and put those in a final report.
From an estimated timeline, you know, we put together a conceptual plan of what the project moving forward could look like. We are kind of in this early feasibility stage, looking to wrap up the study in, you know, in March. The next step would be really understanding and confirming funding, whether that's through a sales tax vote or some other multiple methods before design could begin. We believe design, you know, is really a ten to twelve-month process, nine months potentially, if you have early bid packages. But then looking at following that anywhere from, you know, I've at sixteen to eighteen months, we tried to go out to a lot of our recreation contractors to understand what a schedule these sort of projects would take, and and this was kind of a range they gave us. And then assuming there'd be another month or two for training and move-in once the building was completed. So that's kind of a general duration of how long this sort of project would take moving forward.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to have Marine Store stat, she's the city finance director, if anybody hasn't met her before, and Mike Vatnastel, who works underneath Marine, they're going to go over some of the sales tax revenue projections. So if you guys just want to stick around, I'm sure there'll be some questions and some other things for you afterwards. So please.
Should I stop cheering?
You got that?
Yep.
We're good. Yeah, we we got it now here. So thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. What I'm going to go through here, you're going to see doesn't solve the entire funding solution, but we will try to show you with the sales tax, what the capacity would be as part of the solution as you're considering these projects. The current three-quarter percent sales tax, just as a reminder, that currently funds the debt service and capital for the Alara Center, as well as we've been doing our best to set aside a balance and to reserve to to help with future capital needs of that facility as it ages. That currently, three-quarter percent sales tax is currently bringing in roughly ten million dollars annually. So that's that's the funds that that we're targeting as part of our part of this solution. So you can see there what our annual debt payment is. Your annual capital needs for that facility have ranged, most recently, between two million and eight million dollars a year, depending depending on the year. And we have a reserve set aside currently of about twelve-point-eight million dollars. That current sunset maturity of that debt is just the end of December, the end of twenty twenty-nine, December twenty twenty-nine. So then, when we look at this and potential extension has has been the concept, can we extend that existing sales tax out, looking at a possible thirty years? What could that do for us? And what capacity could that bring as far as looking at these quality-of-life facilities? We're looking at quite a range here, just because there's a lot of things that we'd have to to work through. Of course, this would require a public vote. Nothing can move forward unless the citizens want to move forward with an extension of the sales tax. But with that, we'd be looking at, you know, we're looking at a range between fifty million to eighty million of new investment, while knowing priority, we have to take care of the existing debt and capital on that Alara Center first and foremost. That debt does mature in the end of twenty twenty-nine. Some of what we have to work through as we work through the the challenges of the timing and the the wants of the the construction of the of the facility is what we what we need to work through. And I think we can find some solutions. But I just can't tell you an exact level yet of of what that capacity would be with that sales tax until we work through some of those bond reserve requirements, interest rates, bond coverage levels. So we'll we'll continue to work work through that, but we do have ongoing needs at the Alara Center that would be part of this solution and extension of that sales tax that we would work work into that. And I don't know, Todd, if you were going to go through next steps, or if.
I think one thing, Mayor and and both boards, I think today, we really wanted, it's still in draft form, to get your feedback so that we can come back and have another joint meeting in March and provide for a final draft. In the meantime, we will work with the base of one year feedback, but also look at some some opportunities for try to reduce the capital costs of this facility to narrow that margin of where we're at. And I know this is going to take some time, and it looks like this is like a three-year process anywhere, but we talked about private fundraising and naming opportunities. And so I think, as opposed to just going in the private sector first, we're trying to, the city in this case is trying to seed this project, so that it's a realistic opportunity to to close for the private sector to close this gap, so trying to do it reverse, because I think if we said it's going to be a hundred million dollar facility, I think we'd be here forever trying to do it. So we're trying to do the opposite of trying to find what we can do to get us well over the majority of what we need, and then hopefully close the gap. And then Marine and I have talked about some other revenue opportunities too regarding some of our existing revenue streams that we have with the city, and I would suspect we'd have similar conversations with the school district and the park district about how we can add other current revenue streams to help close that gap. So really, today, we would like some feedback, and then we'd come back in March with more of a finalized plan and and hopefully some solutions on on closing that final gap and and be able to move forward. And Mayor, I know you've talked about, you know, trying to move move something forward here later this year, and so that would be the goal of try to get as much information complete by March so that we can work on an action plan between the balance of the year. So with that, Mayor, and we'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Todd. I think we'll, you know, open up the conversation. Obviously, seeing those numbers is a bit scary. I think it's higher than anybody, you know, had expected. And, you know, I appreciate the contingencies that are built in, because nothing worse than getting a higher high numbers, getting an even higher one later. You know, certainly the funding side's going to be, you know, we can have all the wants in the world. If we can't figure out a way to fund it, doesn't really matter. And I think the appetite in the community for property tax increases is is really not there. And I, you know, I can speak personally, and I can speak for a lot of people I talk to on a daily basis. If you look at big increases, you know, we kind of had the triple whammy here, big increases from the school district, big increases from the county, and then property values have gone up. So people have really been been hit hard. So we've got to find other other funding sources to be able to make this happen. So hopefully, as would happen in in previous cases, we can get that private fundraising. It seems like the community, when they have projects like this, really for we we punch over our weight when it comes to fundraising for for projects like this, for being a. over our weight when it comes to fundraising for, for projects like this for being a town of sixty thousand people. But I think it's exciting, I think in, in draft form here, seeing these facilities, it, it's pretty exciting. But with that, I wanna just open it up and kinda have a free-flowing discussion from here. I don't know if you wanna start with George or your group, or, it usually takes a little while, then once somebody starts talking, then it, then it flows a little bit better. So maybe Jill, why don't you start? You usually can get everybody going.
Well, I was not prepared to say anything, but I always have something to say, so no worries there. Yeah, it's been, it's been great working with the consultants and we've asked them specifically to give us a good, not pie in the sky, but more of like a sobering look at what this would look like, because while we have the capital cost right now, the next step would be obviously looking at operations. And some of that would have to do with, if we need to scale down, then we, obviously that the operations would be a little less, but there's just gonna be some inevitables on how, how do we sustain this and how do we make this a long-term, sustainable process? And some of it is working with user groups to see what would you really be looking at spending for, for rental costs and that sort of thing, and some of it would be just looking at scaling back in other ways and how many tournaments could we realistically get to come into town, what would that economic impact be, and how could we use that to our advantage as, as a town in itself? So there's a lot of great things involved with this, but obviously there are some, some significant hurdles that we need to get through. And so I guess part of what we're looking for is some feedback from everyone to say is, are you feeling like we're on the right track? We took everything that we heard from the survey and from all the user groups and tried to put it into one great package, but we wanna make sure that this is a realistic package that everybody consistently agrees that this is, this is the vision for Grand Forks and what we want.
I have a question, nobody else is going?
Yeah, go ahead Kyle, you even raised your hand, that was very polite of you. Can we see your face? Do we get to see your face?
I, I'd love to, I'm, I'm doing dual duty right now, we don't wanna see that.
Okay.
But thank you guys for the presentation. So my question is, you know, I saw all the great cost information and sizing, do we have an economic impact idea around what the tournaments would do, what the facilities would do to our economy to spur things on, to help us have those conversations to justify the tax? You know, I know there's a hockey facility or ice facility that's, you know, pretty successful that maybe Joe could talk to, that has a very amazing donor, I don't know who that is, but that facility I've heard has brought in quite a bit, and it'd be great to know what something like this would do.
That, that's really part of the next step is finding, as we put an O and M budget together, we will need to put in there how many tournaments, what it's gonna cost teams, defining who's, who's running. Is, is the park district gonna be a landlord-tenant situation where they rent the, the courts and turf and, and to, to the vendors bringing in these tournaments? Or, you know, that's one model, another model is, is that they operate those tournaments themselves and actually get the officials and umpires and all that kind of stuff, or a combination of both. So it's a, it's a fairly complicated process that we try to get, we try to narrow down the, the right sizing of the need and then describe what it's gonna cost A to build, which is, you know, an easier, you know, Zach probably would disagree with me, but it's a square footage formula versus, you know, if you have eight times versus four, you know, that, that's quite a difference. If you've got both areas of the building going at the same time, if you use the same square footage for the eight court or the eight soccer fields versus one big field, you know, that's a lot more bodies in there, same with the court size. So it is complicated. One thing that I will mention from the economic impact portion of this is that's one that it, it's usually a city or, or decision-maker's decision on whether or not any of those dollars, let's say on a percentage, it could be a hotel tax or whatever, comes back to support the facility, which helps the cost recovery of the O and M. Or, in a lot of cases, it's just good, healthy money coming into the city that can be identified by, you know, whatever formula, I'm sure your economic folks have a formula on multipliers on, you know, restaurants, how far people drive back and forth, which, you know, you guys are pretty screwed up there for a weekend tournament, I'm guessing a lot of folks stick around. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna try to determine what that number is and put it in the right bucket so you guys can make the decision, is, is this, is it worth building eight courts versus four? Because once you get down to four, it's a little difficult to have this regional. We did ask that question thoroughly in all three of these arenas, should this facility be local or regional? And it basically came out, you know, very high, ninety percentage of both. We, we want it for local, but we, we want it for regional. And one thing that I will say about doing some of these economic studies, you, you start to look at vacancy at hotels, because you've already, you're filling them with, with hockey tournaments and things like that, so vacancy is, is really what you're, you're dealing with. And it eventually will probably, if they fill up, they will probably spur on more builds. But secondly, from economic development, a lot of times people, they, they fail to recognize that you, even though the hotels don't fill up, you're, you're gaining dollars in your community because your local teams are not going somewhere else every weekend or every other weekend for those regional tournaments. There, there's a place for them, whether it's one out of four or two out of four, where they stay at home and play and, and spend their dollars here. So we don't, we're not to that, that point yet, but that's our next step.
So, good question, so when you get to that point, is there an opportunity to look at the size of any of these facilities and let that help be a determining factor? I understand that user groups are gonna want the space based on what their needs are, but, you know, when we look at budgets and we look at tax impact, can we use the potential economic impact to also help that make, make that decision on is something, you know, X long or X plus two or X plus four? It would be great to have that information as we're making decisions, so it's not just based on users, you know, if we're gonna spend more money, for me, I'd like to see exactly what we're getting from going from eight fields to ten fields or eight fields to six fields and so on. Is that part of the process or can that be part of the process?
Well, the, the answer to can you make, use that to make decisions, absolutely. You know, we're gonna wrap up what we think is final, but you still, you know, as you go off the bond, it's necessary for you to make, you know, know what you're biting off. As part of our scope, we will, we identify how many tournaments, we can tell you the difference that if you drop below this level, you will not have any tournaments, you need X number, you know, in, in the community to, to bring in these tournaments. What we, what is not in our, in our scope or role is do an economic development study of what this would do. Typically, there's either somebody in town from your, your municipality or even counties that, that can look at that and we can say, you know, in this budget, we have twelve tournaments, regional, to draw from, you know, these cities, and give them how many teams, how many people per team, and kinda leave that multiplier and what does that mean to your community, to your economic people? Or if it was part of the scope, we would have a, a economic impact expert on our team to do that. And, and sometimes we've, we've rolled that way. But we certainly will identify based on how many of what amenities and condition, you know, sometimes if you don't put hardwood courts in, you're not gonna attract tournaments. So those are the types of things that, that we can assess and put in the, the O and M budget, so you can go right to how many, how many tournaments. We will talk about local tournaments and regional tournaments and, in every sport that's possible. And, and we certainly know approximately how many kids are on, on a, a team. We also have some research that shows, you know, which sports, for whatever reason, tend to travel in one van and, and twelve kids or kids and grandparents and parents in one vehicle. So we'll help you wherever we can, but we're not gonna be able to do an economic impact study, I think, like you're talking about Kyle.
Councilmember Cavami, I think we can, we can take some of those numbers and similar to what we do at the Alara Center, we work with the, visit Greater Grand Forks and we can, we can use their model to model these various events and provide our economic impact analysis as part of that, similar to what we do with concerts and, and other events that we host at the Alara Center.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments, probably from two different perspectives. One of my first perspective is being on the city council representative on the Laris Commission. I, I would really like to see this type of presentation made to the commission themselves so they could look especially at the utilization of the property adjacent to the Laris Center and how the synergies would be there for, for working together. But I know there would be some concerns, for instance, the snow, snow dump, some of the areas that we, we, how we utilize the property and, and also, of course, the three-quarter percent sales tax, how that impact is, is going to be felt. And, and Marine, as you know, we've been talking about that for a while, but I think it's kind of rubber's hitting the road now and we should have a little more discussion internally to what, what and how these would work, because we've talked about that extension of the sales tax for a long time. Now that brings it a little more complexity and a little more reality to it. So as, as one of the next steps, I would like to see that come together and have that discussion, both in our F and R committee and, and with the commission. And then the other thing I was gonna say, more maybe from the city council perspective is, I'm, I'm glad you looked at cost and cost escalation when you look at the time when this is actually gonna get built, because those are real costs that we have to take into account, because you're seeing, in some cases, ten percent per year costs going up. And, and so in some ways, the sooner you do it, the less escalation you have, but you gotta be able to have the funding to do it too. So it's, it's kind of bringing those together. And the other major thing, as we know, is capital cost is only the first cost. The next cost is how do you have the operation maintenance, you're gonna have depreciation, you're gonna have replacement costs. We certainly are realizing that with the Alara Center now, twenty years out and you're starting to be hit with many of these costs. You wanna keep them as first-rate facilities, so making sure that we're looking not only at today, but how we would analyze that and keep that for, for the long haul. And then one of the last things I wanted to just ask a little bit was, as, as a lot of work has gone into the studies, you can see, and we've got, I think, a great set of consultants that are working on that, would be just trying to address fully, what I would call a needs and options report, how we developed and understood, and I think the surveys probably showed some of that, but to identify what all the needs are, in, in some cases, what facilities we have, why they probably don't work, and, and I think I, I've, at least what I can experience, we've had a lot of needs out there, but I think articulating that and identifying that for the public to understand, to know the criticalness of what we're looking at. And so have that needs and show why these options that have been stressed tonight solve and resolve those needs, and then, of course, align that with the capital planning that we've been talking about. So I think as we, as we look forward, there's a lot of work to do, but there's a lot of great work that's been done.
I think those are all great points. I'm not gonna get into the whole construction, it's a lot of money, I get that. To me, I think it's something that's needed in our community. We, I just saw an article today that somebody pledged a million dollars to a similar complex down in Fargo. Sioux Falls, South Dakota has how many complexes that they use for youth sports? As a dad of a nine-year-old, I know that I travel nearly every weekend in the summer for, for sports. As my son's getting older, it's now going from one sport to two sports, and I'm sure it'll move to three sports. So I'm consistently spending money in, in other communities throughout the Midwest. I did find a report that I thought was really interesting, youth sports in the U.S. is a nineteen-point-two-billion-dollar industry. It's only getting bigger, but then on the flip side of that, the NFL is only a fifteen-billion-dollar industry. And so I think youth sports are here to stay, I think people are gonna continue to travel for them, and I think this is an important investment in our community if we wanna diversify ourselves a little bit more.
What's the functional life of, of these facilities?
We're talking about thirty years of financing, what's the functional life?
Well, from a building design, the capital cost and the design that we've budgeted, these are based on fifty-year facilities, you know, that, we call them that. I mean, our facilities are probably fifty, sixty, you know, that, but we're not, we're not budgeting right now for twenty, thirty-year facilities. I mean, you can do that if you'd like to, but, but our, our capital cost numbers at least are based on that sort of type of building.
Very good, thanks. My understanding of projects of this sort, that they go easier when you, you're able to start with a major private gift, and we're talking about doing the opposite. What is the, the current intended date for a vote? Would that be this fall? This summer?
I don't think that's, you know, we've gotten to that point yet. I think we're gonna get through that March meeting and then probably go from there would be my assumption.
How, the, the work that's been done so far, who, who's paid for that? How much does that cost so far? Is it all pro bono up to this point?
They're, they're actually gonna pay for the facility too, so it works out great.
Almost. I think, I think the total contract was a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, the city contributed fifty thousand towards the consulting fees and the park district paid the remaining eighty-two.
And before we could go to a vote or anything, we'd need to move forward with more work? What, what do we anticipate and, and how are we? And it's just, Park District and City so far have been splitting the costs? Do we have a sense of what the next steps cost?
I would, I would say to the consultants, you're gonna finalize the report and we're gonna look at some economic development impact on our own here, as, with our partners in the city. But when you conclude this report, what would be next? Obviously, we don't wanna go to a final design right away, but are there some additional steps beyond what you're already contracted with that we're gonna need to do to flush things out?
I think as far as our contract, that, that final report and final reporting to you and tweaks whatever it takes to finish up that conceptual design, that's the end of our contract. I'm gonna let Zach speak to what the next steps would be, because they, they take these projects from, you know, sometimes one contract all the way through construction build.
Yeah, from our perspective, I think it depends on what the method of funding is and what that process looks like if, if there's additional kind of high-level marketing graphics, you know, promotional videos, things like that that are needed to help promote, you know, a bond vote or some other public engagement method, you know, that, that would be a potential service, that would be a next steps. If, if the, if the community, city thinks they can find the funding or have the funding without that, then maybe that's not needed. But many times, we, we really, beyond this point, beyond those needed for passing a vote or achieving the funding method, we really can wait, we really wait until that is in place before the, the final design or the next set, set of designs takes place.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Weigl that we have a tremendous need for this now, it's, it's coming on us, and it would be wonderful for the community. And I think that there would be economic multipliers from this and, and those kinds of benefits. But these sorts of facilities are not in and of themselves moneymakers, they, they cost money. And I realize that the next steps include discussion about who would run this, but I'm thinking that would be you folks. So just wanted to get that out there. All right, thanks.
if we invest a majority on the capital side and we're responsible for the, you know, the debt service, I think there could be a combination and certainly the Park District is a city entity, so there might be some sort of combination where the city's involved in some of the ownership of the facilities themselves. Obviously, we're not gonna be operating them and those sorts of things, but I think it would be a combination of those two and it's a unique partnership that would be needed to get this across the finish line.
We've, we've partnered before very successfully and it's served the community well when we have, yeah.
Mr. O'Toole, I got a quick question for you. I probably already know the answer, but looking at the revenue streams, it seems like you, you've got on the turf and court facility, you've probably got a better chance of, it seemed like on the pools, a lot of people wanted to be involved in the conversation, nobody wanted to touch it. Does, is that, is a pool gonna be probably more of a money pit than, than the, than the turf and court facility?
Yes, they typically are. Number one, as we stated before, you've got a lesser number of actual bodies participating that's spreading at larger cost. You've got deep water and pumps 24/7, 365 operating. There's, I've got a 50-meter pool in my community, city built it, owns it, operates it on a high school property. They have Big 12 meets there, Kansas University swims there, they've got four swim teams there, two high school swim teams, and, and it's subsidized by a million three a year now. It started back, I don't know, 12, 15 years ago at 750,000. And the truth of matter is to that operation, they, they make more money closing the doors than having any of those meets. So that's why it's such a complicated issue is because we don't know what the high schools are willing to pay. We know what they've been paying at High Flop and it, and it's, without going back to my figures, I think it's like $7,000 a year, which is nothing. Right now on a, on a 50-meter pool or some of them that I've been doing ONMs for, you know, just, just the, the utilities and the chemicals and, and what have you, and one lifeguard on deck is about 20 bucks an hour per lane. And if we can get five, we, we're jumping up and down. So yes, your, your perception's correct. I think ideally, when we talk about the ideal place for it is, part of that can be, and as we do the ONM, we're gonna do it as what's in addition to the aquatic budget already at, at choice. So you're not starting from scratch, you're gonna have some membership rollovers in there. You're gonna attract some new memberships in there. That's what we have to try to figure out, is what are those numbers? But, you know, and quite honestly, all the way through the process, we had the, the university, you know, one, one of the pool, one of it on their site, one at 50-meter, one at 30-foot depth for aerospace, and then we start talking about their usage and it was minimal. I mean, some of these were classes that were once a week for a semester, for two hours. So that helped with the decision. We did meet, I was gonna throw out that, that we have met with the swimming community, including the university, and talked about who, who wouldn't come down to Choice, and they all, of course, said we'd love to have it on our site, but we're gonna go down. Our tennis is there already and those types of things. So we walked out of that meeting feeling very, very, very good that your entire swimming community, schools included, were taken care of, probably with the exception of the aerospace, which I believe they, it was a two-week program and a couple other, you know, one-time-a-weeks for three weeks. And, you know, we kinda came away saying, you know, they would, they would save more money going somewhere that had a facility for those two weeks and coming back. But I think the only other, the, the swim club enjoys the 50-meter during the summer season, which is a short season, and that's the only time 50-meters is used, the rest of the time it's, it's all short course, 25 yards. So we felt very comfortable with that. It is gonna be expensive to run, it is not gonna make money. You're right, the turf and courts are gonna come closer, but they typically don't, they're not a money generator by any means. So, you know, that's what we'll think, figure out, is, is, you know, what does that mean? And to be honest with you, it'll obviously come down to what fees you feel comfortable as a community charging for these. And, you know, what we see a lot of from the successful ones is not turning anybody away, but setting the market rates where they ought to be and figuring out a scholarship program, and that's where some of your fundraising can come in from your businesses. And a lot of communities, that's the list that everybody that owns a business wants to be on, is that list that helps kids stay out of trouble and, and in sports and, and in activities. And you can break that down to $100 a year, 250 a year, 500 a year on up and publish a, a thank you in, on web pages and newspapers and people wanna be on the list. So it actually puts money into the facility rather than riding moth, if that makes sense. So that, that's pretty long-winded, but I hope that answered your question.
On the other hand, the, the interest in an aquatic center is at least as high or higher than the turf facility, and the cost is just a little over a third of, of the turf facility.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you're talking capital only, there's no comparison. When you're talking operational, that's where it, it gets a little skewed and number of bodies just because of the number of sports and the number of kids that, that play soccer and what have you versus competitors like swim. And, and the other plus that we gotta throw in here is swim lessons were at the top of the list and not, you know, when, when Hislop goes away, the only place to have those is at Choice in a shared four-lane or three-lane, you know, swimming area, and they're, they're at capacity. So there is an advantage to everybody in the community to have, you know, this expansion for swim lessons, water aerobics, you know, for seniors, all that kind of stuff.
Hey, Pat and Steve, a question for, I know you guys have worked with aquatic centers throughout, is it a couple in North Dakota or the region, right? And how have they been successful? Or maybe they're not. I mean, I, you know, a community this size is on the verge of having a three-lane pool on a lazy river. So it's surprise, shocking that, you know, we need a facility, but I'm curious how other communities, I think West Fargo, you worked with West Fargo and is it Williston? How have they done it and are they successful to, do you know how they're operating to date?
Yeah, Steve, you wanna tackle it first?
I, I don't have their operational budgets, Pat, but, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that, that they operate at some sort of a deficit. But, you know, so does, so does the library and, and other facilities. One thing that's unique about a swimming facility is over the 50-year life of a swimming facility, it will save a lot of lives, you know? If, if 100% of the kids who grow up in Grand Forks are water-safe, that's a, that's a very important thing to consider.
Yeah. From what I know of, of the ONMs and in those pools up in that area, Steve's right, none of them, I mean, my first question would be a question back, what, you know, what's your definition of success? If success is saving lives, is having a quality of life component in your, in your community, they're all huge successes. Another story from my hometown, we see absolutely no editorials of complaints from citizens when the city subsidizes that 50-meter pool for a million three every year. The city golf course loses $12,000 and it's all over the front page, they wanna sell it, they wanna do everything. So I'm a firm believer, it's, it's in how, how you accept the package when it's delivered. If you know it's coming and you know you're gonna have to subsidize it and you know where you're gonna get the money, that's why a feasibility study is not my decision to say yes or no, it's my decision to say here's what it's gonna cost you. And if you're comfortable with that, then it should be a yes, and if you're not, then it should be a no, and that should be your decision. So I, I do know in, in Fargo, for example, the outdoor pool that they just renovated, which Steve, your, your crew did, because it was outdoor and had shortened seasons, there wasn't many zeros behind their deficit. And it was, it was a real condensed season and people loved to swim because in North Dakota, when you can be outside and, and the sun's shining, it's a happy day. Then you go to West Fargo and, you know what, that's even, that's the pool you guys built and moved?
Yeah, that pool, the pool tank itself was used in the 2016 U.S. Olympic Trials, which was in Omaha, but the pool has been relocated, you know, indoors at, at the, at the high school in West Fargo, that, and they're, they have a second pool, which is their old, their old six-lane pool as well. So they're operating two pools, but I, I don't know what their budget is, but Pat, it's probably possible to, you know, to, to obtain that if it's metered.
Yeah, I can call Barb and, and get that. So again, it depends on how many teams you got, what they're willing to pay. One of the exercises we went through and gave the information to George is, and it's no news, there's no secret to all of them. I mean, part of being a consultant is to tell the truth, and, and we, yet we had entities that, that all wanted a pool, would protest paid in, in using the pool and renting it at the rates they can afford, they say, but nobody wanted anything to do with the capital and nobody wanted anything to do with, with the operation. So it, it kinda fell on the Park District through the feasibility study. This, this was a, a good resolution to all that, but we're still now to, what, what are you willing to pay to have this new facility and to have your swim teams come into it and blah, blah, blah? And, and, you know, they've got two pools that are shut down. They've got one that, that Steve looked at and I looked at from an operational, and if they were just to rebuild that six-lane pool that wouldn't meet the needs that this one's gonna meet, you know, it was like $144,000 a year for them to, to maintain that on top of whatever capital that, that, I forget Steve what you said it was. So something like, do you remember what that figure was, Steve?
Pat, I put together what I thought the operational cost would be. I don't know too much about how much effort it would be. Someone in a meeting in Grand Forks recalled that it was gonna be approximately a million, but we assume that's probably a, a four or five-year-old number, to put that.
Right.
You know, they have, there's issues with the structure and the HVAC that are all fairly costly.
Right. Okay, now I recall, yeah, you, you put together the chemicals and all that and I put together the manpower and what have you.
Right.
So even at that figure, if we were able to roll that over and say, instead of spending $144,000 on a six-lane pool that, that you band-aided back up for another how many years, how about putting it in on, on your swim teams coming to, you know, having reserve time over here for this new, nice new facility? That's the pitch that needs to happen, that, you know, again, we can tell you what, what those figures are, but we can't twist anybody's arm to say that. But we have looked at what they're, what everybody's paying at Hislop and, and it isn't much. I, I believe, again, it's like $7,000 a year for the schools, and it can't be much if, if they aren't using it anymore than they're using it over there for their classes and what have you. So I, I think you're right, that that's the one that, we don't have anybody stepping up to champion that, but I, it doesn't diminish the need and, and all that in your community. And again, we haven't, we haven't set prices or talked affordability for the youth groups on, on the indoor turf or the, or the court yet either, so we could be in for a surprise there. But at least I think those teams are used to traveling and, and paying some fees that can, that can be associated with a range here that they're used to.
I have an answer. And then I'm gonna hand it over to Council President Sandy because he's itching to say something. Mike Stromberg in the audience, so if it's wrong, you can blame him, but he, he, he gave me the number for the Bismarck pool, on the city of Bismarck has a pool on the campus of Bismarck State College, and Mike took a look at the operating deficit and he said theirs is 331,000. So that's probably the order of magnitude that we're, we're talking about in our case. So sometimes, you know, when people say everything's a million dollars, once you keep repeating a number, then everybody repeats it wherever they go. So we'll do some more in-depth looking at what West Fargo does at their high school and, and also follow up with Bismarck, but just so you have a order of magnitude number. So with that, Mr. Council President Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Can, can we, can we talk about the finances real quick? So we saw a pretty big, pretty big, pretty large number, a couple of numbers, and we, we've talked about partial funding using sales tax. What's the, what's the gap? Nobody's told me what's the gap. I don't know how much money are we gonna, do we have if we keep the three-quarter cent and we've got approximately, you said $4 million going to the Alara Center for annual maintenance? How much money can we finance? How much short of the 140 million are we?
President Sandy, I can answer that. So what we tried to show is a, a range there of 50 to 80 million is what the capacity would be to bond with that existing sales tax after taking care of the needs of the existing debt and capital dealer center.
So we're 16 to 90 million short, right? So I'm trying to get an, I'm trying to wrap my hands around how we're going to, first of all, come up with that, and the fundraising is a great idea. There's a lot of fundraising currently going on in town, lots and lots, and every single nonprofit is fundraising. So it's going to, and this is great. I love the whole concept and I want to get behind it. I'm planning on getting behind it and trying to do everything I can to move this forward, but I also wanna be realistic that it's gonna take the entire community to come together. Not only is the entire community gonna have to vote to support to extend the sales tax, everybody's gonna also have to reach in their pocket to come up with some cash to help build these facilities. And we haven't even started talking about, sure, okay, you got $300,000 potentially, and we're gonna have to raise a mil and a half for the Park District to cover, to cover the deficit just on the, on the aquatics facility, and we haven't even gotten into how much it's gonna cost to run. So for next month, when, when we come back together, are we going to have estimated costs, operational costs, expenses for what it's gonna take to, because you got more people now than we have currently running Choice to run all of those facilities. I mean, the budget for the Park District is gonna have to grow significantly, and I, I have no idea the concept of how much money you bring in for tournaments or for rentals, I have no clue. And, and that's your deal, and I'm glad you guys manage that, and, and I'm, I'm just concerned, how are you, if we all come together and say, let's do this, how are you gonna be able to manage that? Right? So my concern is for the health of our Park District, and, and most of this is rhetorical, so I'm not expecting answers this minute. But then, in addition to that, the thing that bugs me the most out of this that, that I've been harping on for 12 years is in 30 years, we run out of funding for the Alara Center. And so is we, if this is our plan, if this is honestly our plan, then we should let UND and the state of North Go to know today that they have to have a new facility for the football team in 40 years, because that's, that's, that's where we are. And I, I'm okay with that as long as everybody understands that that's what's gonna happen, because I don't even think, frankly, I don't think the $4 million a year will cover, will cover the capital improvement budget based upon where we've been. And again, all of this is fine, as long as everyone has eyes wide open. I, I'm not against it, it's just, it's a lot of money, and, and I think the mayor said is right, we have had a lot of success. We do punch above our weight in Grand Forks when it comes to getting projects like this done, and I think we can do it. I think we need to be very open and honest with people what it's gonna take. This isn't just a, I'm going next door and asking my neighbor for $35. I mean, this is gonna be a significant effort, so, thank you.
I think Council President, the answer when we come back in March, I think our, we will have the operating maintenance costs and then we'll have to look at the gap, so we will have that additional information. I think the other thing every, the Park District folks should know, not only do we have a three-quarter cent on the, for the capital, but we also have a one-quarter cent, is it restaurant? What do I call that tax?
I believe, are you referring to the quarter percent restaurant lodging?
Restaurant lodging, so for the operating, that goes, you know, infinity and, or until it's out there. So that could be another strategy is that obviously this is going to move forward with, you know, food and beverage, lodging, and, you know, we subsidize the operation of the Alara Center through that one-quarter cent and do other things, so this might be another opportunity to do that, and certainly they're gonna benefit with that. And I think what we're doing is, Zach said, these facilities are functional 60-year facilities, and so if you look at the Alara Center, if we extend this 30 years and maintain it, that Alara Center will be a 60-year facility, and I don't know what the world looks like 30 years from now or 40, but that facility will probably be obsolete too. So I mean, you look at NFL stadiums, I think they become obsolete in 20 years, but that's, that's what our intent would, this would be the last generation, we'd have one more generation of the Alara Center, and who knows, some other generations gotta jump in here and do something too.
When, when you're putting those
But that's, that's what our intent would, this would be the last generation. We'd have one more generation of the Alara Center, and who knows, some other generation's got to jump in here and do something too.
When, when you're putting those numbers together, can we somehow factor in that this is also a public safety issue? We don't expect public safety to generate revenue. It, it provides safety. Also, the facility, especially the turf facility, has lots of different optional uses. One of the successful amenities of our community is the farmer's market, and there's been interest in, in moving that to a year-round. I wonder if, if we could set up part of the facility for, for things of that sort as well. Thanks.
Mayor, I, I would just like to respond a little bit about the Alara Center. I think one thing the city has done in, in the 3/4% sales tax has allowed us to do is reinvest into the facility to keep it top-notch, and we're, and we continue to do that. And I would hope that whatever facilities we do, we do the same thing, because, you know, people come in there today and they, they wouldn't believe it is 20 years old. It's, it's, it's really geared to go well beyond, I think, the normal lifetime, because you invest and reinvest in it. And so I think that's a critical thing as you look at these projects. And then, and then the operations is always an issue that you, you just got to be aware of.
But I think the other thing we can look at, it, you've got those soft costs, it's always the bottom line, and the soft costs and the contingencies, and, you know, that's because Zach's, he's never going to be wrong. Would it, that number, he will, that, whatever this comes in as a cost, Zach will never be wrong, because he's got plenty. So as we work through this, and just because I've worked with plenty of these folks, we're going, we're going to want to refine that, because I'm always concerned about that bottom line, because it's good that we're never wrong, and at the same time, we don't want to blow people away and say, there's no way in, in hell we can ever do this. And so I think we need to do some work on that too, because certainly we don't want to be wrong, and it, you know, was, it was much more than we ever anticipated, but at the same time, when you inflate things, people throw up their hands and say it's futile. And so I don't think it's futile, and we may have to resize some of these facilities too. And, you know, maybe we can have the six courts as, Mr. Cavani said, maybe we have to go down to four, but that doesn't mean we can't host tournaments and all those sorts of things. So those are all the things we can do. But we wanted to make sure, I think, today is that we were on the right track, and, and these are the kinds of things that we want to do. And Council President Sandy, we even got, yes, you want to do that, but I, I think right now you're overwhelmed with the gap, and, and our job will be to come back with some more refined information that'll help, hopefully, at the next meeting to say that, yes, we can do this. That's what we'll try to bring back to the next meeting.
Where's the school district on this? School board?
We're, there, we have been meeting with the school district, and, and certainly, this is part of their facilities, right? They have two, they'll have two pools that are not functioning, right? That's not part of their next bond issue. So I think this is a way for them to take that off their list of to-do and incorporate it into a broader list. And I think what we're going to push the, and we're going to have some meetings with the school, we're going to push the school district is to say, you're going to have to pay more in operation to support your swim teams, to support what you're doing and the days of, you know, having others subsidize some of these activities. We just can't do that. So I think we'll have to have a realistic conversation, but at least you don't have to own the facilities. That's a win. We just have to pay annually a certain amount to make it happen, and that's the conversation that George and I will have with, with the school district.
And the number of teams, that's going to be impacted by the quality of and availability of facilities too, so we can't use today's numbers. Right? Thanks.
All right. Hour and a half. Anybody else got anything else for the, the good of tonight?
Thank you so much.
All right, well, I think I will say for Dana's point, the 40-year notice on a football stadium is better than a two-year notice on a pool. So I think we'd be doing them 20 times more of a favor to UND on that one. But, yeah, with that, I guess we're adjourned, and thanks again for everyone for, for being here tonight. Good conversation.
Great.